Okay, I call to order the board supervisor report session on the zoning ordinance rewrite for April 1st, 2019. Who is going to be, are you going to be running, running the show? Uh, any, any questions, comments, or anything you can start? How can we be here?
Yeah.
Okay. Say, Joanne?
Yes.
Break us through.
Thanks for giving up an afternoon to come out and talk. I think last time you saw the first maybe twenty of this eighty-five slide presentation, and it was at the end of a, a long meeting.
More than three minutes.
We sort of ran out of steam, and so I think just sort of getting together, and we had it set up that we've broken it up into three parts. Um, so it's a little more bite-sized, we can sort of have more of a general casual conversation. Um, we did the same presentation for the citizens today, we're going to be covering the youth districts and the, um, all the zoning districts. This is not something that people can really wrap their heads around. We did not have a big turnout. Um, we had a planning commission member, we had two board members, they get to listen to the board presentation twice, sorry about that. Um, and we had two citizens, so we were a little disappointed, um, but we did get some good feedback, particularly, uh, one of the person, uh, who came was an engineer and really went through details and gave us lots of really good feedback, um, and then some other, uh, feedbacks from the other citizen. Um, so this is after three sessions that we've broken into, this is probably the driest, so I hope I don't sound like I'm reading the dictionary today, but it is what it is. Um, so, alright, so, you know, I always start this with the planning commission, planning commission had about nineteen, um, meetings so far on the zoning rewrite, they've been working on it for the last two years. Um, we meet, uh, prior to every planning commission meeting, so they have gone through all these sections, given us a lot of feedback. Um, but I always like to start with this slide because this is really what we're focusing on, and when we make any decisions about the rewrite, um, this is the three things, does it modernize the, the plan, does it simplify it, and does it clarify it? So those are the three things that we want to make sure anything we do with the rewrite does. Um, I've talked to you about this before, why we're doing this, our ordinance is about fifty years old, we're seeing multiple code amendments through the top, through the last few years, uh, and we've never really gone through and looked at our comprehensive plan and what strategies were in there that should be included in our zoning ordinance. We really want to make a tie between our planning commission, I mean, between our comprehensive plan and our zoning ordinance, um, and we've done that through all the statement of intent and some of the changes that we're making. Um, other goals is to correct inconsistencies, make it a much more useful document, um, I've gone over the format with you before, we've gone to a lot of chart formats, uh, diagrams, graphics, that sort of things for better clarity, uh, ensure compliance with state and federal law, codify some of our existing procedures such as the pre-application process, which is a pretty critical to our process, but it's never been codified, um, and again align the ordinance with our county plans. So some of the strategies that was in the zoning, um, in the comprehensive plan that we want to include in the zoning rewrite that's, would be included in this section is we had in the rural strategy section, support agribusinesses to allow appropriately scaled low-impact uses on working farms. We spent a lot of time going through other zoning ordinances, we also worked with the RR PDC to see what uses are in our agricultural uses that, that may be appropriate in Beutel and will be recommending to add some of those. Um, and then another, um, uh, implementation strategy from the, from the comp plan was to review our home occupation ordinance to allow uses in barns and outbuildings. Um, right now, people could only do, uh, their home occupation if it was in the principal dwelling, however, a lot of the farms have outbuildings where they do some of the home businesses, um, so that's one of the changes we're also recommending. Um, we are not creating new townhouses or multifamily districts, Mr., Mr. Deske always likes to know what the rumors are, that was the rumors that was going around from the citizens, um, that we're creating townhouse districts and multifamily districts, we're not doing that. Um, and we, very critical, we do not want to create any non-conforming properties with this rewrite, so I need, most of the standards are getting loosened, not signed. So what we've done so far is we've, uh, researched and benchmarked other localities, we've reviewed our comp plan, we've done an issue analysis of our code, my code does not have a page that does not have notes or markup on it where something's not right or it references a sha- section that doesn't exist. Um, we did a detailed matrix for every, uh, use, uh, so we know where things are permitted. Um, like I said, we spent a lot of time on the format, um, what I've handed out to you today is each section, the first one is general provisions, the next grouping is the ag, then the residential, then the business, then the commercial, and then the youth standards. Um, I've shown you the format before, but I think you can see it there, I think it's much easier to find uses now, much easier to figure out where setbacks are and things like that. We've often been able to take probably about eight or nine pages of text and get down into about three because we're using charts, uh, where that information can be shown in a much easier format. We've also done a developer roundtable, that was well-attended, we have about, had about twenty-five, um, developers, engineers, uh, they gave us some ideas and issues that they were having with the code, and then, like I said, we had the citizen meeting on the same presentation that you're going to see, so now. So what you have before you, as I said, is the general provisions, um, I'm not going to go into that section much, that's really just talks about why we have a zoning ordinance, where the official zoning ordinance map is located, the districts that are allowed in our zoning ordinance and things like that, some really pretty high-level general things. Uh, those are the things that are in that section. Um, so now I'm going to go into the zoning districts, I'm going to go through each grouping, agricultural, residential, business, commercial, and then we'll do a stop point after each one for questions, um, or, and a few of them have some decision points that I'd like to get some feedback from the board on. Um, so the first couple slides are the changes that we've made to all the districts. So in all the districts, we revised and shortened the statement of intent for each district, um, specifically say what types of uses are in that district, uh, what the density, if it's residential, and then where, if, what the designation on the comprehensive plan is appropriate for that, that zoning district. Uh, we put the permitted and CUP uses in a chart in alphabetical order, um, we put all the bulk regulations, which is setbacks, heights, lot width, uh, lot size, density, that sort of thing into one single chart, um, and now we have three different categories. So right now, we used to have things that are permitted by right, which are shown in our chart as a P, and we have conditional use permits, which is shown with a CUP. We've added this sort of middle category that we sort of have been moving towards the last few years, um, so like when we did sawmills, we had some extra standards, when we did the bed and breakfast, we had some extra standards, so you either can meet those standards, if you can't meet those standards, then you can come back and apply for a CUP. So a number of, the number of these uses would be by right with development standards. So now we're going to go over the agricultural districts, currently we have four agricultural districts in the county, um, this is a zoning map of where they're located, it's generally the green areas, um, are the agricultural districts. Most zoning districts, um, build in intensity, like A1 is less intense, A2 is more intense. Ours is not set up that way, our A1 and A2 is geographic based, so it basically splits down the county, um, on the right eastern side of the county, that's sort of darker green is the A2, um, the more yellow-green in the west is A1. Um, the A3 district is for, um, swine facilities, aquifers, meat processing, that sort of thing. We do not have any A3 zone property in the county, um, but the state does require us to have a district where you can do that sort of operation.
So the western part of this is not agricultural?
It's A1.
Oh, I, oh, I see, I thought in the green.
My pointer does not work. So, yeah, so it's split, so the yellowish-green is the A1, um...
They like yellow in there.
So everything from here is A1, yeah, and then this is the A2. Yeah, so it's a, it's more of a geographic distinction than a, um, again.
You can go back to regular point.
I know. And Todd's telling us. Anybody else?
Just, I want to stick back and say, so on district boundaries, section eight, where uncertainty exists as to boundaries of any district shown, so, like, I understand some of the conditions that we would have for when it would be different, district boundaries, but shouldn't be, shouldn't they be, uh, there probably shouldn't be any, um, district boundary issues, or, because they were, are they, are they divided by polling district where they're set by, they're set by the...
So generally, it's some, it's, they used to be, you know, it's sometimes the board and the past, so five hundred feet from the right-of-way along Patterson Avenue, B3. So this sort of gives you some, when you're not sure where that boundary line falls, that was that right-of-way switch or something, so it really just talks about how the zoning line goes to the center of the street, if there's a lake or a pond, it goes to the center, that sort of, sort of information.
These are zoning districts, not rural?
Zoning districts, yes.
Not census blocks?
Right. So it's more of like when you have something odd, like a railroad, a street or something, how you, whether the zoning goes to that point or the middle point or something along those lines?
Probably a structural change, please.
No. But that's, all that is existing. Alright, so these changes, um, all, most of the changes that were made in the A1, we made the same in the A2, um, so I'm going to cover both of them at the same time. Um, so we, like I said, we, we spent a lot of time looking for uses that would be appropriate to add to our agricultural districts because we want people to be able to do things besides subdivide their property in agricultural districts. Um, so some of these uses are added as by right uses, some of them, we already have them located in the county, we just specifically have them called out as a use in our ordinance, again, we're trying to have further clarification, so if we know it's already in the county, people are already doing it, let's add it to our code. So these four are all, um, we're adding, but we already have examples in the county, a community garden, farm operation, greenhouse nursery for production, and a wetland mitigation bank, so that would be at, those uses would be added to the A1 and A2. Um, we're adding some new uses, uh, to be compliant with the state code, the state code requires, um, any residential districts to allow family day homes, uh, less than four children, that's a childcare facility, um, and then they also require that each, uh, residential district to allow assisted living facility and a group, um, eight or fewer, so we went ahead and added that to all the residential districts. Um, some other uses that we're adding as by right uses is a tax germy shop, governmental buildings, and a park and ride facility. Uh, uses with development standards, all of these standards are already somewhere in the code, um, a lot of these, we have that supplemental section where, as people added things to the code, they didn't know where to put it, so then there'd be a, a use for a horse-riding stable, but you didn't know unless you knew that back in the supplemental section, there was a section on horse-riding stable, and there were standards in there. So now we're making it very clear, so if you look at the chart, it says horse-riding stable in accordance with section, and it references you to the youth standards, so that you would know it was there. So all of these are already in our code, bed and breakfast, biosolids, family healthcare structure, horse-riding stable, public assembly uses, uh, one thing I'm adding to this, because that came up during the distillery conversation, uh, we had always, when we made that ordinance about not being on a shared private road for public assembly uses, our intention was really any uses open to the public, um, that wasn't very clear to the applicants, so we're adding, uh, uses open to the general public, that talks about being on the, not camping on a shared private road, sandy gravel pits, sawmill miners, short-term rentals, wind, wind turbines, and associate uses at the wine river recidery, that's the ordinance that we did that allows weddings. So all of those are already in the code, but we're just clarifying that they have additional standards. So some of the new uses with standards, development standards that we're recommending is a farm stand, farmer's market, home occupations, small cell facilities, and telecommunication tower. Um, one that I want to go over is the home occupation, um, as I indicated, the way the existing ordinance was written, you could only do it in your existing primary residence. We have, have now expanded it, that you can do it on any building on your property, um, you can have no, no employees other than, uh, family working there. Small cell facilities, uh, that was a state code change last year with the 2018 legislation, uh, we are required to allow these, uh, those are the, uh, small, uh, equipment that's usually placed on buildings or light poles to allow for, um, broadband data, and, uh, so we've added that to the code. And then the telecommunication tower, um, that was revised based also on the 2018 legislation and have to no longer require propagation maps and some other things like that, so that was, those were updated based on the state code. Some of the new CUP uses that we're recommending to add for the A1 and A2 districts are farm distribution hub, farm and feed store, livestock markets, car washes, convenience stores, gas stations, again, we have these in the county, but they've never been put in the code, we don't even have to term gas station in our code, um, we've got plenty of gas stations in the county. Home-based businesses, um, this is one specifically that the chamber had contacted us about, they have, uh, found that, um, many of their entrepreneurs that start in the county start sort of in their garage or in their home, and they wanted to have an option of having employees work there as they build. Um, the home occupation does not allow employees, but we are adding this home-based business, so if somebody did want to have employees, they could come through and get a CUP, the neighbors could be advised, we may put, you know, conditions on it that may be appropriate depending on the site, um, that they're located at. Joanne, what's that listed in there?
Yeah, I've not found it in several weeks.
Uh, we'll tell you, we have been, these are in draft form, this is the most up-to-date, so that, the chamber had contacted us about three weeks ago, these were done for the citizen meeting, so they will all be corrected, it's just we're working through it. Uh, retail uses, solar energy farms, gunsmith shop, adult daycare, and commercial recreation. Yeah.
Quick question, car wash.
Mm-hmm.
If somebody's holding a, um, charity car wash, I would say?
No, that would not, that's a different, this would be, you know, someone operating a commercial car wash. Um, these are, are very minor, but we did make some name changes, you know, sure, I'll go back.
Um, there's at least one in my district, it's, um, where you pick your own, uh, farms, strawberries and stuff, um, is that in here?
That would be considered the farm operation, and we would have, but if, but if you want to do a pick-your-own, we can add that as a...
I'm just saying, if, you know, if it doesn't matter as long as we consider it where it goes.
I'll take a look at that.
Like when you pick.
Yep.
Pretty cool.
Is that the handclap voids?
That's, well, good, well.
Yeah, like a pumpkin patch.
Yeah.
It's a bunch of, you know, different...
And, um, vertical track, that's cool.
It may be good to add that specifically as a use, I have to think of what the...
Or just add it somewhere, just so that it's clear, that's, that's, like, you...
Anybody want to talk about uses before I do, because other changes, whatever on this slide, or like, go back?
What were you saying about the horse, with, with the horse farms?
Stable? Riding stable?
It was a...
Okay.
Yeah, the horse riding, there was another challenge.
Questions, three or more than five students, horse-riding stable accordance with fifteen dash two point two.
So I guess the way you're doing it is, your P was by right, but when it says in accordance with section blah blah blah, that means within development standards.
Yes.
So there's not a separate, uh, you know, level of designation.
No.
It's still showing that is permitted.
It's just go and look at what these standards are.
Gotcha.
So, and like the farms, the riding stable, it already had standards, it just never directed anybody to go to that, so. There's been a couple that we found that, you know, we didn't have assistance, so.
That's why we're doing it, right?
Yes, and if we can't find it, we certainly can't expect citizens or developers to find it, so. The last couple standards are also one of your handouts for today, the last handout you have is the youth standard.
It hasn't gotten, okay.
Yeah, so, yeah, and I know you probably talked about it separately, but just to, so you know, and those are also, uh, divided in categories, agricultural, residential, in alphabetical order, so it's real easy, we hope, for people to find, it also gives you a specific section number, so someone can go directly to the section. Um, I think Mr. Lunkin had asked one time, it's, if, if you're on Unicode, you should be able to just click on that section number and it will take you right to it.
If I, my question, um, two, two questions, they're kind of high-level, just to get my head around some things. In the beginning, you said you went through the entire code, so was that just the appendix you made, is that what you focused on, zoning code, is the append, which is currently the appendix?
We went through the entire zoning ordinance, yes.
So, so when I'm looking at, on, on code section now, I noticed like Article twenty-one, supplementary, supplementary regulations, Division five, development, so I, that's obviously another article in the current code. Are you going through that as part of this, are we going to be pulling things from, from that development section into zoning?
Yes, so, well, most of the standards, uh, we have already pulled out from the sections that apply, like riding stables is in that supplemental section, we have pulled most of the standards out, but as we continue to go through it, we, we're going to the ordinance word by word, and it'll be broken up, and there may be things that we're going to have to let you know, oh, and we also found this, and we added it back in.
But the idea is, um, I think I followed, the idea is kind of a one-stop shop, or at least here, what, what's...
Yes.
So, that kind of, I think, sort of, in my mind, is a little connected, like, when I see on, in a statement of intent for A1, it says, this district isn't, the district's intended to have cultural use, low-density by right residential development, if I'm looking at this where, will I find what low-density by right means?
We did not put the, we put the acre, the minimum lot size in the residential districts, we did not add it to the A1 and A2, but that's a good point to put the minimum lot sizes in there.
So that was saying, I guess, Tom, you were, yeah, yeah, since it says, it says, this district, next one, this district, A2, agricultural, coastal, co-mingle with low-density residential development, agricultural-based business, but again, so I would look at low-density residential development, and of course, you said it's by right in A1, but I'm assuming it's by right in A2 as well?
Yes.
Yeah, like the definition of major subdivision, that's, that's further in the residential, right?
Yeah, this district, yeah, district intended to allow minor, but, cover major, and I would just, it says major subdivisions would not be permitted, just, you know, passive with...
I'm happy with that, because it's not, but, but tension from it all, so.
Yeah.
Very hard, hard not. I think for that, uh...
Shell, shell.
Yeah, I, I pull shells out, yeah, I, I'm more of a must person.
Okay, I didn't know that, though.
Yeah, now you know.
Doesn't show.
And that's probably a good point, uh, Tara has only reviewed the agricultural districts, she has given, just given me recently the comments, and she did pick up on a lot of that stuff, so what you're seeing is definitely in a draft form, there will be some modifications. It is spirals, when you make one change, you have to opt to go back and do it to all the districts, so I have a full master list of changes I'm making, and it gets complicated to do it one at a time, so we're sort of holding off and doing them all at once, and it's...
And I have more questions, so section eight, district boundaries, we talked about a little earlier, the, the point of that is to kind of set a framework of what it kind of looks like, but I, I think, when I see the official zoning map, or official zoning district map, when something gets rezoned, then that map changes to what it left.
So the, the state code allows every locale to have a official zoning map, right now it is our paper maps, um, which are updated every time something is zoned, we, we are in the process of going to be starting that project to make it a GIs base, and that will be our official zoning map, so when we do that, we will have to update this section to say our official zoning map is our GIS map.
So, so when, if something is in the middle of page two, district that we rezoned, or, you know, R1 or whatever, then the map changes, um, and so, because when I'm looking here, all these districts, it says district boundaries, but actually, there can be lots of boundaries as we rezone something, that becomes a different zoning, because these are zoning districts, right?
So these are all the zoning districts that you can zone to, so it would, it would become one of these districts, if we were to add a new district, we would have to update section six to add a new district.
A new type of zoning classification, got it, okay.
Question, one last second, basic question, every square inch of the county is a...
Correct.
Something.
Yes.
And it's by, nothing else by, default, according to...
Right, so...
To, to, to bigger, to bigger map.
Right, this sort of sets it out, so the, the zoning line goes to the center line of the street, so if you're zoning a piece of property, the zoning's actually going to go to the center of the street. I think this is about where the point we got to at the last board meeting, at the crash, so, maybe I'll start taking a few more into it, but, um, okay, don't get too hopeful. We did make some name changes, again, this is just for clarification and cleanup, um, single-wide and double-wide manufactured homes, um, we now calling them dwelling manufactured homes, where we're politically correct, um, fruit and vegetable stands became farm stands, we changed, just sort of cleaned up, campground, summer camps became campground, camp day or boarding, um, really nothing significant, but just wanted to make you aware that we were making some changes. Um, the A3 district, again, this is the, we don't have any things zoned right now, we are required to have this district, um, the only thing we did is that we did add A1 and A2 permitted uses as well, um, because right now you could, you could have a swine farm, which could live there, so we added the actual...
Joanne, how many hogs do you have to have in order to be considered a swine farm? I know there are a lot of folks who wish on the help, thanks.
I think it's two hundred and fifty or something like that.
That's a pretty high limit.
Yeah, and it's, it's regulated and not saved, um, but you have to have nutrient management.
You said we don't have any areas that'll make...
We also have a district, uh, forestal conservation, open space district, it's been in the code for about thirty years, um, nobody is zoned FC, um, we went through it, we didn't really see any benefit for somebody to rezone to FC, it's very similar to the agricultural district, except it's very limited, um, so our recommendation would be to delete that district. Alright, so that gets us to the agricultural districts.
One more question.
Yes.
Alright, so, so you said the purpose of A3 is what again?
Um, abattoirs, like poultry, swine, uh, poultry farms, uh, swine farms, it's that very high-dense, um, animal farming, manufacturing, processing.
I remember from, let's see, committee dates, I was wondering if you talked about, are those things you just mentioned, would those be by right in A3, if someone rezoned A3, or...
They are a CUP.
They're all CUP?
Yes.
Are they by rights in A3? All of, in all of P1, all of P1 is by right?
Intensive swine.
Yeah.
Intensive swine, that's, that's permitted.
Right, and we don't have a choice about that, that is... Right, and we don't have a choice about that, that is state code requirement. So we actually have to have this district and we have to have this intensive swine facility.
Is that, is that the?
But there are, there, there aren't any standards for us, but there are state standards they have to meet.
So what is an intensive swine facility? I can just leave it in my imagination.
I'm guessing something like.
It's not going to be.
Something that doesn't smell good?
General Assembly, that's it.
Uh, the definition is a swine facility shall need facilities with accessory uses or structures, including meat storage bins, litter storage sites, incinerators, menorah storage sites, which at any one time, seven hundred and fifty hogs are confined, said, maintain pet or bread. So, seven hundred and fifty or more, so, that's a lot, lot of swine.
And we honestly cannot, that has to be created, are we?
I know, that's my understanding.
Seven hundred and fifty hogs to go in X order.
No, it's only, it could be rezoned.
Yeah, you don't need.
If it's only three. There's no A3 yet.
Yeah. He's opposed it.
So, so under A1 and A2, they can't do, they can't do it?
They could do agricultural, yes, they can, they can keep hogs and all, but it's that threshold number.
Up to seventy, so seven hundred and forty-nine.
Yeah.
Well, you make a good point, that was my question, the district's number fifteen dash one point three, you have seven hundred and fifty thousand hogs, fifty acres, then it says each additional thousand hogs, additional twenty-five acres. You kind of think you need to do, that's not really clear, what if you add a hundred hogs, do you have to have, what if you have two thousand, one hundred, what they're on? Yeah, I think it should say something, each additional thousand or, or everything, two thousand and one to three thousand. All right, if that's what you're.
I mean, we're not shooting the message, and we understand just saying.
Oh, that's fine, I got tough skin.
Yeah, we, we might be down in general segments, some of this. Okay.
Okay.
Okay, cool.
All right, any other questions on the ag district before we go on to the residential district? All right, so the residential district, um, they sort of are grouped naturally into three groupings. We have our RR and our RP, those are more of our rural subdivisions, two and five acre lots. The R1 through RPUD is more of your traditional subdivision, what you would think of as subdivision. And then the last three, I just called kind of our oddballs, that are sort of, don't fit in any category, you know, residential office, mobile homes, and our mixed plant use development. So I'm gonna cover the agricultural residential type sub, residential districts first, the RR and the RP. Um, again, want to show you where they are, those are more of the darker yellows, um, that are, you can see in the rural areas. So this is a RP, this is a RR, RP's, these, these colors. Uh, and you can see, whenever, uh, the, all the by rights splits are taken, they can rezone to the RR districts. You can see, you know, pockets of them throughout the.
What is that one in, um, that bigger one in the western?
That one is the golf course, um, because states that rural Virginia, yeah.
Low-density by right, because again, here I see in this statement intent, low-density residential, which is the same in A1 and A2.
No, it's not, so that may be.
But, but same wording.
Yeah, and maybe a term we might not want to use, so need to think about that.
It may, it, obviously, when you have a word like density, that describes something, that's gonna be different.
Absolutely, so, that may be a term we want to relook at, that's a good point.
And I don't know how that relates to the comp plan, whether the comp plan talks about those.
Yeah, we'll, we'll take a look at that, see if there's any. Because certainly, when people are, at Tucker Bridge last night, they were saying one point two units per acre is high density, right? So, and, and he was saying, no, high density is like eight units per acre, so it's all from your perspective.
It doesn't help, if we're gonna use it, of course, it's defined.
Uh, that's a good point, so I may either define it or remove it, so I'll get back to you on that one.
The comp plan does include also median density. So, I'm not sure, it talks about high density.
That goes into our clarification.
But people think it's high density. Yeah, it's called a vertical here.
Sure, okay. So, some of the changes that were made to all of the residential districts, um, the lot width had some reference that it's exclusive of the lake and river, which didn't make any sense, so we removed that. Um, there's terms in there for setbacks that are different for primary and secondary, but those were never, never really defined. Uh, we went ahead and, uh, put in the primary roads, it specifically says, if you're located on six, two fifty, five twenty-two, these are your setbacks. So nobody's guessing what the primary roads, and then these setbacks for all other roads, uh, would be the other category. We also had height, it just said one story, but again, that wasn't defined, we're adding it, changing that to fifteen feet. Um, and these are the by right residential uses, um, that we're adding, and these are required by code. Dwelling, manufactured home, that would be a mobile home, assisted living facility, group home, eight or fewer family day homes, just like I talked about in the agricultural districts. One thing we also did is we added home occupation as a by right use, um, with our development standards, to every residential district. We had specific districts, especially like the R1, that specifically permitted for a pivotant home occupation. That was done when the time is different, so many people weren't from home now, it seems appropriate that you can do it in any, um, residential district. Um, so these are the uses with development standards, again, these are not new ones, these are already in our code. Home occupation, bed and breakfast, chicken keeping residential, those are only permitted in the RR, RP and R1. Family healthcare structure, home occupation, and short-term rentals. So we are adding a new CUP use, um, and an adult daycare center, um, for the RR district. You can already do a childcare center, whatever, any district that had a childcare center, we also added adult daycare center, again, changing demographics. Um, these are probably gonna be needed in the county, considering, uh, we have an elderly population. Um, in the RR district, there was a section in there that said, under the open space, that staff was granted administrative authority to negotiate and determine compliance with the open space regulations. We don't have any open space regulations, other than the size, um, and we didn't feel like it would be appropriate for staff to be allowing changes in this, in this requirements for open space. So we are deleting, recommending that be deleted. Um, so the RP district, all those changes that I just mentioned in the RR, we made to the RP. Um, the RP district had a specific section about, um, parking of commercial vehicles, um, and whether they were permitted in subdivisions or not. We are going to take this out and move it to the U standards, and it's not the U standards yet, um, but it'll address how and when, if you can park commercial vehicles in your residential areas.
So I'm sorry, how will they know if it's not a U?
It's gonna be in the U district. It'd be U standard, it'd be, it'll be under the category, okay, commercial vehicles with, in accordance with section.
Okay.
I got it. Um, the RP district also had a section on construction trailers on residential lots. This is another one that, there's a lot of districts where people want to have a temporary mobile home while they're under construction. Again, we will be adding this to the categories and putting it in the development standards, that has not been done, but we plan on doing that. The final change to the RP district is they had a whole section in there about telephone booths, and took that out, so I don't think anybody's gonna have that. So those are sort of the, the larger lot residential districts, so now we're moving into what people consider more of our high-density suburban-style subdivisions. Um, we have four districts, and we are recommending some changes, um, so I'm gonna have this chart with some of the recommended changes, and then we'll go into the districts in a little more detail. So right now, we have R1, which is a twenty-four thousand square foot lot size, uh, the net density, which is different than just the base density. The net density takes out the twenty percent open space, um, which is a requirement, and twenty percent for improvement, which would be roads, BMPs, that sort of thing. So generally, you could get a density in R1 of about one point two, and the existing lot width is about a hundred feet. The only district that's used up here really is the RPUD. Um, everybody who comes in wants to rezone to RPUD. So we have these other districts, and it's like, why aren't people taking advantage of these other districts? Um, and, so we wanted to make some changes so that these districts may be more attractive, and we're not getting the same development. Because with the RPUD, uh, it's really, it has very small lots, no minimum lot size, no minimum lot width. You know, park at Saddleville, park at Saddle Creek, saddle, uh, Parkside, all of our new developments are the same district, they all look the same, they're all about the same lot size. We'd like to have some variety in our housing, so we're making some recommendations to make, try to make some of the other districts a little more attractive, so that people may want to rezone to them. So right now, the R3 district, um, has a minimum lot size of twenty thousand square feet, which would be a net density of about one point four. Um, we are proposing, we drop the minimum lot size to fifteen thousand square feet, which would, uh, be a net density of one point nine. Um, and then the lot width is seventy-five feet, we're not recommending any changes to that. The RN district is fifteen thousand square feet, does require public utilities, um, the net density at fifteen thousand square feet would be one point nine. Our recommendation would be to drop that to twelve thousand square feet, uh, which would be a, a net density of about two point three, and we're recommending the lot width also drop to seventy-five feet. The RPUD district, there's no minimum lot size, no minimum lot width, and the density is two point five. So we'd be bumping up from, ranging from one point two, one point four, one point nine to two point five, to one point two, keeping it as R1, R3, up to one point nine, RN, two point three. However, with the RN district, a fifteen thousand square lot is much different than in the RPUD, RPUD, where you usually get about a six thousand square foot lot. So you get comparable density, but a much larger lot size. So I'll let you think about that a little bit, and then as we go through each district, we can talk about it a little bit more.
Why are you doing that? Why are you recommending?
Because right now, the only district people want to rezone to is RPUD, that's the only thing anybody comes in for. So we are hoping that we could have similar densities, but larger lots, and have a different type of residential development.
So the net density, like that one point two, one point four and all that, what does that mean? One point two houses per acre?
Yes.
Or per lot?
Per acre.
Average.
Acre.
This is average for the entire neighborhood, but you can't, you don't, you don't.
Oh, it says minus the open space.
I was just explaining what net density was, so.
Okay. And how does the lot size compare to acres?
There's forty-three thousand, five sixty in an acre, so both of these, the R3 and the RN, would be about third, a third of an acre lots.
And I don't have it, the comp plan here, but isn't that done in acres?
Um, it is done in density, based on density. Oh, no, it is acres, you're right, it's acres.
So it's not mixing and matching, to me, to me, um. I, I, I just, I can't get my head around lot size and square feet, I'm just, I'm just not there.
These lots would be about double what the RPUD district is, but it would be, um, quite, you know, comparable.
What's the, I, I understand, it's like, I think we talked to Tucker overage, it makes the homes exactly about this, you know, when they're trying to squeeze their, they show as a chart, that they're gonna have these kind of things, show where they check the boxes and which one, and they fall short, the RPUD, so they make it up in progress. And what do you, what do you, what do you try to, what's the benefit of going to RP, now we have lot size, is there another benefit of RN besides the lot size? Uh, is there, is there, is there another box that they can more easily check, I guess, because people are going through a checking box, is lot size, moment, and really distinguish.
When width, so lot width, lot width really is critical in determining the character of the development, in my opinion. So when you have a larger lot width, you can use side entry garages, that sort of thing. The, the smaller the lot width, you often have, have the garage pushed out, so you sort of have those snap houses with the garages, you know, up front, and the, the, it's a garage, it's a garage with a house attached. Yeah.
So, so RN, in your statement intent, RN says, this district corresponds to areas designated on the comp plan as being, uh, I wanted to read, I wanted to read something first. R3, as this district generally corresponds to areas identified with comp plan for residential uses. R, I think, there was another one that said the same thing. Yep, R1, R1 says the same thing, but then I go to RN, and it says, this district corresponds to areas designated on the comp plan as being in a village or designated for residential use.
Yes, you have to have public utilities for the RN district, R1 and R3 you do not.
And RPUD.
You have to have public utilities.
Okay, so public utilities, and then, and then, so, so then a difference on RPUD, you don't have a similar district in RPUD. But it does say, it's, district is intended for rather transitioned adjacent uses, very limited, limited commercial uses also allowed, it's just, so I guess that's just the most intense. And I guess when we get to it, there's one of these standards that talks about the commercial. So you're trying to make RN, we're allowing it to be a little more dense.
Yes.
It does probably more intense, I would think. And you're hoping that some people can come up with product that like, look, I, RPUD's the only thing that works for me, but now we're getting another option, maybe, we're not, we're not as, as good as.
Yeah. Maybe do something more, go ahead. Couple things real quick. The number one thing that's gonna drive how developers can then apply is what, market says, what this type of product, that, 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 that. And with the graying of American, they do simply now, sounds like preference, maybe it's free, all those kind of things. Uh, and the price point, uh, seems to be where market demand is, that's, I think, as much as using as our code, is why they're buying for certain products. And when they come into our code, they're okay, the highest density, they make the most money, so they're scanned up, oh, there's your RPUD's highest density. I think those two reasons are why they're ending up there as much as they want. If, if, if we're trying to encourage them to do something other than what the market demands, or other than how they can make the most money, we may be pushing on the straight there, maybe, or one or two, a little bit, I'm just making that as a joke, I, I, I do think we need to diversify, something for other countries, is a lot of a role, but I'm guessing why they keep going, you know, we may not be, because R3 is twenty thousand instead of back to you. Another comment, um, this is helpful for me to see the different districts, and then the salient characteristics, a lot better, but, uh, here we have, really just by, you know, category.
By, yes.
So within residential, or within agricultural, we have a similar matrix where we're showing, within residential, here's all the different residential, and then, and then, here's your salary. You know, there is a minimum, there is a setback, and we're young, so that folks, when they're trying to decide what to result to, as opposed to having a U2, so in some place I'm going, but, oh, well, it looks like RPUD's probably not much, so I'm gonna, I don't.
Yes, yeah.
I'm not saying it's exact, or something like that.
Something like that, yeah.
Yeah, and we could either do something like this and have it on the website. I'm not sure, it could either go in the front of the residential districts, in the, in the code, or it could just be a separate document.
It's just a guide, it was not a part of the, it wasn't necessarily, but it's just a wiki, yeah, I really like that idea.
Okay, we can do that.
Once it's all, you know, separate.
Right. So, there's gonna be, we get to the point where decision points, you don't have to go with this. Again, we were just looking at the comp plan and it talks about, you know, having variety, you know, encouraging variety of housing options. And without really diving into apartments and townhouses, we were brainstorming of how do we get a different type of housing product? So, this was one of our, you know, suggestions of how to do that. But there's a decision point at each time, if you guys think it's a terrible idea, so.
I think it was last night, this is a big topic, because we have heard the developer, and at some point, said, he was considering something between RPUD and RN, then last night, he did about three of them.
Yes. Surprised.
And I'm not sure why he switched to R3, because he's not really, not really following RPUD or R3 or RN.
He's with, I.
He's, he's.
But if you look at his development, his density is, is one point two.
Right.
You know, perhaps, there could be a different district that he could look at.
Right.
If there was better options like this.
Minimum lot size, I think he's proposing twenty, twenty thousand.
I think it's fifteen thousand.
Fifteen thousand, so he's really picking, I mean, it's a new zone, it's a CUP.
Yes.
It's fifty, it's minimum lot size, he's going with RN.
He being the RN standards of an eighty-five foot lot width and a fifteen thousand square feet development. An eighty-five foot lot width, that, that allows side entry garages and a much different, much more flexibility on the product.
And that's what he's proposing.
Yes.
But where did the R3 come in?
So, it's a mix. I, I, I think the R3 came in, because the comp plan says that it should be resolved to R1 or R3.
Yes.
So, he was trying to follow the comp plan and name all, I mean, really, it's only what the comp plan says, R1 or R3. And then, he's kind of picking from all.
You may want to keep that to a hypothetical discussion, since it's leading us to advertising, discussion, specific.
Yeah, no, it's, it's a, thank you, this is kind of confusing.
It's very confusing.
Okay, so, let's start with the R1. So, the changes were pretty limited in this district. It specifically states no home occupations, we're deleting that section. There's a long list of the animal section in the, in the R1 district. Again, we put them in the uses, but we've moved all the standards to the development standard section. The mobile home or trailer, that's gonna go in that section that addresses everybody. They had multiple uses, they had schools as a buy right use, and then, they also had nursery schools and private kindergartens, so we just deleted that because they would be schools as well. So, pretty minor changes to the R1. R3, we added the same use changes that was discussed in the R1. So, now, we get to our decision points. So, right now, the R3 district is very unique in terms of, you can do single-family housing by permitted by right, duplexes permitted by right, triplexes permitted by right, and quadruplexes, just four units, as CUP. One right change that we were thinking about is, should a three-family dwelling go from a permitted use to a CUP use? Do you think all the multifamily uses should be CUP uses? Do you like that you can do duplexes? The only project that took advantage of this was the Creekmore down on Patterson. So, a good bit of Patterson Avenue, the first five hundred feet was zoned R3 by the board of supervisors, probably twenty years ago. They had an existing R3 property, and they came in and subdivided it into, I think, eight lots and did triplex units by right. So, while the R3 district, people think of it as a single-family district, you can actually do density much higher than the RPUD, but it's, it's, some of it's a buy right use. So, that needs, that's something that the board needs to decide, is do they only want single-family as a buy right use and all the other uses that are considered more multifamily or more than one unit be CUPs? Or maybe duplexes are okay, and triplexes would be a CUP.
This, this part's a question that I had in the introduction. You said that focus is on not creating non-conforming problems with your suggestion there, maybe two or all, two or three or four, part of CUP. Would that create a non-conforming?
We would do it in a way that says duplexes or triplexes created after January one, twenty sixteen, so they would not be, yeah, we would do it. We would do it in a way that's not.
That's an easy answer. So, we're not, we're not hung up on doing something like, oh, my gosh, there's something here.
No, we would do it in a way that we would.
Could, could, yeah, because I was thinking, how about, I'm thinking, you can stay and avoid, not for profit, could. So, is that, that's exactly what happened right after your three March, that portion was R3.
They could have done triplexes there, yes.
By right.
By right. And, and the board did that, they stripped R3 zoning along a good bit of Patterson Avenue. So, a lot of Patterson, Route Six, from here, almost all the way to Canton, and some R3s.
And that was, Ch- Chalpe, Chalpe, you initiated, Chalpe?
Where, where else do we have R3?
Let me go back. Probably should have pulled out a map, but we just does, I'm sorry, I did not know that. It's gonna be.
Can we fill a lot of it?
Uh, stripped around this, so the R3 is sort of this orange color, I'm sorry, it's this one. So, R3 here, this is R3, R3 here, all through the courthouse, there's some R3. I think that's the only areas, it's really focusing in the courthouse area and eastern Patterson Avenue corridor.
Not in Centerville so much.
Not so much in Centerville, no.
Right. For the side sites, you know, code, that's not made enough of it. Could the three, triplex be vertical as opposed to horizontal?
It does not specify, so yeah, if they.
And then, what's the space in between verticals, they do like a zero lot line, you know, it's, could they create an apartment-like development by stack? By stack.
No, it's thirty-five feet height.
Might have been able to put three guns, thirty-five foot close.
Yeah.
Ten feet is not enough. But anyway, you see, I would go, I would want, if people move my lines off, if we're ready to envision horizontal. Psycho family is plus together a little bit versus.
Yes, so for a triplex unit, you need a thirty-five thousand square foot lot, so a little less than an acre, you can do a triplex.
That's like, that's about, that's three acres, probably.
Yeah.
And so, further, it could be a long further, it could stack, taller than to be from that. So, we need a further acre for triplex?
No, you would need a lot that's thirty-five thousand square feet.
Almost, almost.
Yes.
You're correct.
Three, one, one building with three units in it, and it doesn't matter whether they're sideways, up and down.
So, what we had out here.
This was down to R3. Really good example, it's a Creekmore place, have you seen the triplexes down there?
So, along where we're going here, minimum setback, thirty foot high, multi, multi elevations. In a R3 residential.
It is, it is, it is a lot. Does offer a variety of housing options, though.
It's from the.
I'm not very good at other changing question, I have my favorite CUP.
For all multifamily or for triplexes? What is your thought on duplexes? And, and, yeah, we're not voting, but I'm gonna be taking your recommendation and putting it in my draft as what I'm presenting.
Do you, do you have a lot of duplexes? We have a lot, there was, these duplexes, I mean, I mean, certainly, more like one apartment.
We don't have a ton, but I'm not gonna say we don't have any either. So, for a duplex, you need twenty-five thousand square feet. So, you could actually do four units per acre, for duplexes.
Four units per acre. Duplexes, twenty-five feet. Interesting. And, yeah, it's, it's quite, you know, impressive, that's a question to answer.
And that's, that one's already a CUP, so there would be an extra layer of scrutiny, so.
I would say at least, I'm not so sure, like, CUP, duplex, I mean, R3, that's R3. R3, just about as broad residential use, could you, you have your duplexes, triplexes, quad. But, you know, you just take triplex and quad under CUP, you have. You just take half, most, more intense half.
Are there thoughts?
So, like, we have the duplex.
And triplex. By right.
By right, and then, the quad is a CUP, because it's with the baby's weight, from what I'm saying, maybe the triplex will be a CUP.
I would, I mean, I would think in, yeah, water and service. You wanna maximize.
I'm thinking, R3, you might have to have public utilities.
But to have the duplexes you do, for the, if you look at the, for the duplex, triplex, quadplex, you do need, oh, no, I'm sorry, you don't. Sure, if I called water, of course. They do. You need public utilities for.
For anything more than single-family use.
So, staff's recommendation also was change the three-family dwelling from permitted use to a CUP use. So, it's decision of whether we want to do just that one or include the duplexes.
Yeah, I mean, having water and sewer sort of changes my thinking a little bit. I would more flat.
Because I, I mean, again, I'm just, I'm just thinking, if you want to maximize water and sewer. The only, you can still do it with CUP theoretically, but the idea is to encourage water and sewer products in your service districts. So, it seems counter to say that you will, you're good with it if you want to do duplexes, even if you want to stack your duplexes. But we're not good with it if you want to do, uh, triplex or quads. About any, we, I think, about any, we don't limit the number of bedrooms, tribes or quads. I think one of my concerns, one of the NPDs, NPD was that if you get down to quads, four bedrooms each, your price points, you can drop to the point where it's gonna cover the cost of services. And that's what the NPD was, they find if you're doing higher than, if you're a quad, you do more of this, fully family. But you've gotta have enough commercial wrap and the price of, to give it this, if you, so the, as a package, it's, so. I think as you get down that quad or tribe, with the density of the bedrooms, like, you start to get into that question of, is this multifamily, or why it shouldn't be? Should be an NPD approach for the, for R3, okay? It's the discussion at some point, one of that slippery slope to come to, part of the, but I, I hear where you're going, is we, you know, the density is, depends on where you're supporting support. And the more, the more user you have on the part system, the way it is, it's better. If you just work with NPD, just like, yes. Because if you look at all the kind of services, that's why you have the discussion. You're like, this, that, or two. Your ser-, your density, your service density, your service due to density area is probably less costly than it is to the area where it gets, it's more, where there's more acreage. You have gardens, so it'd probably be the cost of service, a high density area, whether it's police, fire, or water, is gonna be lower than it is in. You know, large, or large. So, then, you then to the cost of services, the taxes are lower, which one is supported, yeah? You know?
This is the hardest slide of the day, I would say, so.
You know, I think if you can't take the two, the two bullets, really, you should take separate, you should, separate. Second, because we right now have duplexes in two twenty-five thousand, three units in thirty-five, four units in forty-five, that's very. That seems to me to be counterintuitive to have a large lot, when you have water and sewer. Because, now, you're looking a little perplexed, but it seems like we're getting into large lot sizes. I don't have with four units, if you're building four units, you probably don't want a lot of yard to take care of. We're talking about the density, you just want to, more like apartments. So, forty thousand, you just feel like, that's about an acre.
But, but, you need it to, because you're.
For parking.
Well, parking, your, your buildings, your structure typically larger than a single-family house.
Well, if it was filled with forty thousand, that makes sense, but it seems like you can go vertical with it. There's a lot of things to work, a lot of different. I mean, I, I was thinking about suggesting earlier, it's a CUP, what are we protecting against by having a CUP? What are we looking for applicants to bring us? A situation where they're gonna address some of the concerns that can't just stop. Is that what we're gonna use the CUP screen, which is, yeah?
I know that the, the Creekmore, the single-family residents were very surprised that you could have triplexes across the street from them. When we had this meeting two weeks ago, the citizen who came, this was the only comment that they had, is that they're, they were surprised that you can do these types of uses in R3, and to them, that they always felt that R3 was presented as a single-family district, and it's not.
With single-family.
And most of these R3 districts are, the way you showed it on the map, they're not big squads apart, they're kind of along the main roads, right?
Right, or somebody could rezone to R3 and have a big squad.
So, if you rezone, you know, a hundred acres, then you got a bunch of quad, like what we've got a pop complex. Basically, where you have to, to get around, like, get satisfied, some hopefully, say.
Certainly have a multifamily development in the house.
What's the difference between this and that?
So, these are on one lot, so they are, would actually be more like condos. So, the ones down at Creekmore are condos, so you don't own the land underneath you is condos.
But, but when we come up.
Sorry, what's that, what's that?
Turn from solutions, they're a lot longer. Yeah, so you townhouse, you own your, your property, building, and your land.
Own your board.
That's okay, so we say duplex, triplex, and quad units, they can be my job, right?
Yep, there's no owner information required or anything.
Like, like a doctor's one, like a doctor's. So, I, I can say where citizens would be confused, presidential development, that's what we said, I don't know, how to manage. I'd love to break that out, just have.
A three-story house, rent it down, my, my, my side.
Did you residential?
In the residential, this, I don't like this.
The border of the lines. Which is going straight from R one to the east end, right? Part of, it just seems quite a bit of jobs to have a duplex in your second. Feels that way, I can see why I'm being confused.
It's not.
I mean, if we have a R two, that makes sense.
I mean, no way would I allow it to split through.
And you, um. We, if we eliminate, can, can we leave assists for? Most are rezoned, but not allow anybody to move to R three?
Oh.
And eliminate R three?
We have, we did that when I worked in Mariko, they had a, a zero lot line district that they kept on the books, but nobody was allowed to read them. Do it anymore. But I, I think you're talking about just for the multi-family, not for all of R three.
But what else is?
What else, you know, what's, what else?
The single family.
Right, but the single family, how's it different from R one, the, the density?
Yes. The lot size. So let me go back to that page, there you go. So the R three for a single family is twenty thousand square feet.
All these things are cubic different.
Right, so if you got, if you got rid of the ability to rezone to R three, then the option would be a twenty four thousand square foot lot. Fifteen thousand square foot lot, if it has public utilities or R three, then really everybody.
Or you could take, just take out, I'm just talking about that, um, and I'm not sure I like the idea of that. To fix it, you could take out the duplexes, triplexes, and quads, leave the R three at twenty. Just throw it out, it'd be easy fix. And then, and.
And just to be the devil's advocate, because this is sort of where I've been struggling, is when you went through the comp plan, one of the recommendations is to encourage different housing options in the county. So we will be taping that away. I understand it.
Sounds like a counter argument to market demand. Sounds artificially derived. You know, versus the market demand argument. Road to hell on this page.
I mean, anybody.
R three something.
We would probably have to leave it as this, or we, we have to grant other properties an already there, so like. Would, would, any R three properties?
Structures, the, the ones that are already.
So, so if, if we changed, if we took it out and made it CUP only, the current R three property would not be able to build triplexes?
If they don't have it now.
They don't have it now.
We'd have to make sure that clear the advertising, but yes, it's.
But anybo-, anyone that would come to rezone to R three, that wants to build triplexes would be um. Would be presenting the case for triplexes. I mean, if they're going from Mars one, they wanna go R three, they wanna break, build triplexes.
They have no.
Part of the zoning argument would be, I'm gonna build triplexes. Except for existing.
Why not, yeah, why not do, why not do R three, single family, and then everything else CUP?
Okay, that, that's one of the options. So.
And then, and then the board can weigh, then the board can weigh in on any dwelling size over.
Duplex, triplex, and quadplex, move all of those, that's a CUP.
That probably.
Still gets, still gets, makes it available.
And just to your other point, to me. It's a hundred acres and two hundred acres too much, or it's one quad too middle?
Right.
How big a quad?
Well, then that's less than CUP.
Okay, CUP would argue this.
CP would argue that you have the chance to weigh in on CP on anything, right? See, whatever's committed, there, someone may come and say, I don't, I'm making this too much. Or, how about, where you, it is arbitrary, the person's gonna decide it, you know?
Yeah.
That's like, yeah. That's a, that's a, that's a. Authority says it's too much.
Every time you're, every time you're, you know, gone alive, is that arbitrary, is it arbitrary to have your lease law go to single families or criminal family? That's what we thought was fair. Okay.
All right, well, that's like, so, so one of the suggestions might be to take the multi-family out and have all that be a CUP. For then, just leave the single family. And then, without dropping.
It is gonna put more pressure on the board, though, I think, because we're gonna have everybody coming in, have regards, so.
It's on the votes, it's a bad vote, they're fine.
So you're only doing duplex, and if the mark, but if your market demand is calling for truffles and quads, then what do you do?
What is it? Are you saying anything rest for it?
But we're gonna truffles in Creekmore.
Almost another one. I mean, that's, I, I agree, it is. Pressure there. It's on the votes, it's a bad vote, they're fine.
So you might as well have the authority, I guess, to have the authority, what, come on, have the authority to weigh in on any multi. Thousand, come up in R three period. Because you're gonna have, you're gonna have to deal with three and four anyway. What's dealing?
What?
What's wrong with dealing with two? Still have some board.
So if it's, if so, I'm sorry. If somebody came in and all they wanted was to rezone one of those little streets in a, in a courthouse village or someplace like that, and they wanted that to be, you know. Duplexes and triplexes, we'd have the opportunity to look at it, go, well, you know, it's that smaller section, it's in more dense areas, and this is a good idea. As opposed to the guy comes in with his hundred acres, and says, well, that's not what we intended. You know, why are these three zones ever created, when it's small, in certain locations? You know?
To that point, maybe you put something in the intent, where it says, this is not intended to. I'm still saying five hundred acres, it's really intended to see, in the, in the village, suburbs, or whatever. If there's, if there's something like that to do, guys, it could all, maybe, so, it doesn't influence, it doesn't require us to do anything. But it, it gives the board something to look at, probably, yeah. This isn't really what you're thinking. So if you're thinking, to extend, you can, give me a example, and that's, I think, most people, most people don't want. Well, go ahead, gentlemen.
Well, but it looks like where most of the R three is now, it's not even a copulation, so, yeah, that's bad.
That's in the courthouse.
I know.
Courthouse. I don't care, it's a lot of two eighteen, I guess, maybe.
I mean, makes, makes some sense, I, I, I don't know. I mean, the only thing we could possibly do today. Fewer ha- hassle of application is do we wanna say duplexes of, you know, two, two units, a total of four, or something like that. To just say, okay, that maybe you could do by right, I don't know, it makes it harder, maybe, um.
And, and how we would do that for a lot.
Yeah. Okay, I mean, maybe not.
Yeah.
That's, that's why I, I'm gonna be glad.
Between R one and R three seems like a jump more, I don't know, I mean, R three, this district also limits public, semi-private institutions, other related uses. So R three's, has language related, seems to, and, and comes with duplex, triplex, and quad. It's just such a leap, and I think that's why people say, oh, I'm rising up, but single family, we need to be around. So, if we're not, if we're gonna stick to these two, such a gap between these two, R one, R three, I guess, CUP is, is the way, is the tool to manage. Is that, is that fair? And when you're talking about a hundred acres, someone's like, I want to zone a hundred, rezone a hundred acres, R three. A CUP would allow that they come in, and I guess, maybe this is, this is not accurate, but I guess you could say, okay, in our CUP, we wanna put some triplexes in front entrance here. But we would agree that, you know, all this enters, the single family role, could, would that be a legitimate approach to a CUP?
Already, if you're trying to, they get back in lots, so I think we have some town, some single family.
So the RPUD does allow townhouses, they sort of mix it together, but yeah, you, if, that would be under your purview to look at if you were rezoning, or looking at a rezoning case.
So. You know, RPUD, they could do that by right, though?
Yes.
Okay, well, then, then, that's the difference, then, because at least in R three, we have some control with the CUP.
You can give a rezoning to R.
Right.
You have to rezone to R three, and then that is a process.
It's a, so it's proffer based rezoning, as opposed to a provision based. So you pay both of them according before you, and one, you can tell them what to do, or not do, and the other, they can tell you what they're going to do, and you can say yes or no. You need an ability to negotiate profits, they can change that, they've also volunteered, and then you can say yes or no. The other is, do animal provisions, you think, you know, make this work, what do we want to impose, it's done.
So if we change this, wouldn't that make more people just go? So, so, our counter argument for having more choices. It's really RPUD, and you're coming, you tell, tell it what you wanna do. Or proffer what you wanna do.
I'll do this for the hardest side, yes.
So it's a flexible, it's like a flexible, um, anything goes. Versus something so standard, I make it easier. But the RPUD, well. It doesn't match the density, so if, and the RPUD, you could say, I want to do a few of these high density, and you want to do a low density, on the high, at the time. It can't be used, RPUD is longer, people have density, you know, five, five, or six, but again, because these two point fives max five. So they could be a mix of product, but, so.
And this actually has higher densities.
Right. Duplexes, triplexes, that's the higher density R three, something like that. Just high density. On its parts, of the what you wanna add, which is. I, I guess, I'm, I mean, I'm thinking that, at least we have all these different zones, is to give people clarity. If they wanna build something, they don't have to go through the whole, you know, it's kinda like, hey, here's a standard, I'm gonna meet the standard for R three, I'm gonna develop it. And you don't have to go, you know, all, kind of pre-approved in a sense, if you follow all those standards. Um, where if we make a CUP, then it's always an expression of the board, right? I mean, again, it puts it back on the board, which, you know, we're elected to. But I think, to your point, I think developers would like to have clarity, you know, if, if there's just like, R one's never gonna work, and so the next thing is just. Got not clear, then we go to all the way to RPUD, I'm still trying to get my head around all the differences, but I would like clarity, and then, and then this can. This needs to fit with our comprehensive plan, because if we, if we give future boards more pressure, more options to control. There's a good side of that, and there's a difficult side, and that is, the community's, if they look at comprehensive plan, it says low density. And we're, we're, but. If there's R one, and then there's R three, then, then we're gonna be, people are gonna be saying, I want RPUD, and I'm gonna, how is it my place, you're going for this high density? So is there, is there a zoning classification that? Goes back to what is the market? The community is talking about, oh, we need transitional zoning to transition from the answers. But the market's maybe. Utility, pressure utilities, market's saying, put smaller, smaller, um, lots, put one house in smaller lots. I don't know. There's a downside of the way we go, but I, I do, I do wanna be sensitive to somebody coming in and developing, having some clarity in options, and saying, okay, I think I can fit in this except for this one piece. Proper or conditional use for the R, R three. I mean, you, you need water and sewer, right? So you need to be in a village. Now, we only have two villages, right?
No, they don't have three in the village.
Well, if you have some water and sewer, right now, we only have water.
We're creating more stuff, like sewer, right?
Yeah. R three, R three doesn't need, as a Creekmore village.
For the.
For any, or any pockets, yeah.
Yes.
Which can do a single family, but it's not. Right.
Well, so for all the multi-family.
Correct. And the multi. And that's under the principal structure, where we say served by public water and sewer units, right?
Yeah.
Is that? I, I was just fancying through, and I was looking for that statement that all, you know, two, like triplex or quad require.
It's on, it's on the second page, principal structure, top of the second page, it's probably growing units, and it says two, three points, all of them have served up. Just as a reference. So. Um, so. If we say, this stuff goes inside the village boundary, or the prime economic development area, TCSD or SBR. We have to, it makes sense to say, this higher intensity is meant to be in the village, in the rural, in the primary. I don't know, that, that's.
We could certainly modify the statement of intent.
Maybe, let me ask the question instead of giving the answer, is that we have people insisting that our comp, the comp plan has higher density, vertical transitions, and public access. My try to tie this back to.
One of the goals.
Maybe we have some two, you have to use positive, served by water and sewer, private. Maybe that, that would be a situation, like. Although, I'm here, closure, like, like closure, yeah. And then have, and then it, and then we're, we're, we're higher density, and that is, that's a, that's a, that's a. But can you, make it, can only all be totally.
Okay.
Well, if you say served by public water and sewer, because.
Those five.
You said, make that change.
No.
Change it to be served by public utilities, not private.
Because, I mean. Let's say hypothetically, you have, in the case that had access to public water and sewer, it's a transition zone. Where you want medium, solid density, but would that be appropriate for this? Because if you just say, access is public water and sewer. It's access, that's.
That's like the flag for the taxes.
If we put proffer, I'm just going back to the comp plan, that's all, this would be the right place to put this.
So if I can try to sum up, and, and if I'm not right, then please let me know, but I think what we're talking about is we're gonna be modifying the statement of intent. To provide some guidance on where multi-family uses would be located, um, particularly in villages served by public utilities. We would be changing the requirement for other dwelling units, that they have to be served by public water and sewer. And then, I think what I heard was a CUP for duplexes, triplexes, and quads. Is that?
Yeah, I think that's, what we heard, so, or, when we asked about, when we asked about, so, what about something in the intent, maybe, that, that for us is. You know, adequate. I guess I could proffer, but couldn't, transportation, you know, road network, or something like that, is what I'm thinking. Because if you do high density like this, a vision, then it's, potentially a vision, then it's CUP.
Maybe say, make some sort of statement that these should be located areas where there's existing adequate infrastructure, they can serve by public utility. I, I, I think we could beef that up. Because underlying every use is that it should be on the right transportation and network, I mean, that's. That, that, that is a legislative decision, you're all.
This might eliminate from, you know, we're hearing a lot of, a lot of input on workforce housing. And we're actually perhaps making it harder for workforce housing by eliminating the.
We would be eliminating it, which it becomes CUP, so they have to go through an extra step.
Make it a CUP.
I mean, to your point, I mean, you, the higher density, the lower price point outside, you know, it is very, it's cheaper than that, so if you're really targeting the lowest possible price for housing, then, why is it cheaper than that?
But outside the village, if you don't have water and sewers, you can't, you can't do workforce type housing.
I guess this would be the, uh, the, for that, like, more than you need or something. If you have higher density, you have some construction made for it, but, but, part of that, I don't know. Maybe you have a separate discussion on that.
Yeah.
So again, this is still, you know, the first conversation, we're gonna be making these changes, there's gonna be more public input, public comment, so shall we move forward with, with what I summarized?
Yes.
And then we'll see, we might even get different comments from citizens or developers as this process goes on, right?
I just have one question, let's just say for a minute that we adopted these changes, so someone today owns a property that is, it's on R three, they have a building, okay, definitely. So when this comes into effect, then they would have to, for example, duplex, whatever, multifamily, they would have to come into this.
Yes.
So we're really not grandfathering them yet on their life to do it.
No, we, but we would have that specifically in the ad, and so that they would be aware that the changes were being made. But, but our, our.
I'm questioning that.
Right, our intention is not to, not, should, what, what, so, what, excuse, Joanne said, is we're not gonna create any non-reformable structures. So the creep more, which has houses. Often times, if it's not a compliance with zoning, there's a limit to how you can change them, because they're non-reformable. That's what we're not gonna do, we're gonna make sure if you build a triplex, it continues as a use, using all things with. If it burn down, you may.
That's not a question, that's not a problem.
Okay, so that was the goal, was to have those not, non-reformable, you're, you're saying, wait a minute, now.
I haven't built one yet, but I'm planning to.
You bought it, you bought it knowing what it could do.
Exactly, now you just put another barrier kind of, I, I just have a little bit of a problem with that.
So I could, I could say, where you, you might be feeling like you're taking some rights away.
Exactly.
And the only way around that would be, for anything, result, two R three after a certain, they, assisting.
That would be, right.
That's the only way around, so if you wanna continue.
Maybe, I mean, yeah.
If you wanna continue to allow all the R three we saw on that map to be in the two, because it's talking about, you know, whatever we try to put.
Whatever it was, right. I, I'm just saying, you know, you bought it with that intent, in, um, two years from now, whatever, now you're telling me, I have to go through these other hoops, that's, I, I, that's all I'm saying.
But, so I can remember, I think, I think the county, its own position, it's on some of this, I mean, it's on, it's on, it's on, it's on, it's on.
Yeah, but somebody, I'm gonna, you know.
Somebody went and bought it.
Somebody went and bought it.
Maybe somebody went and bought it after they were already on the.
I, I don't know, I just wanted to think through that part, so I wanna take something away.
So the only way around is if it's existing, I'm continuing to, I think there's, it's not, I think, there's.
It certainly weighs against, so I understand the, the right to protect the property owners, that will weigh against a very clear zoning ordinance as to how it applies. Because if you're not changing anybody's ability to have a use, then you're gonna have these pockets that could exist and, and fit. So, although that's an R three that was a four, we have to retain all that information and have it in the, in, quite, in the ordinance.
All, simply.
As a cutout, sort of a carve out, this is the R three before, this is the R three the app, which.
All, simply, we create, I mean, really, value, an R four. R four is all the new stuff we talked about, everybody that stays R three, and R four has.
And a lot of you can.
And everybody, right. I don't know, throw in another class out there, maybe, nice.
R three B.
Yeah, well, at R three states exactly the way it is. I don't know, maybe it's too much work, uh, you know.
Makes sense, you're saying this, this zoning is, is here, so it's just kinda part of this, this is unsustainable, and no new applications may be applied for R three, you want, and have more intention for R.
But when we look at the, I, I, I don't know.
So it's R, B two two. Five triplex.
Well, so I see, I don't know, I may be making it harder than it is. I was still, still, we got out there and see what the public says, and, you know.
All right, so we got halfway through the slide.
We cannot solve.
And now we just changed all your, all your.
My pretty cards are gross, yeah, that's why I didn't keep making changes.
Right, yeah, right, you did this without.
All right, so we only got halfway through the hard slides, now the other one is, is there interest from the board? Is it a good idea to change any lot sizes? Do you think that's a dangerous slope to go down, and would you prefer to keep it? I, I, in this last clip, doesn't like it, I'm just.
We're less than half an acre for a quadplex.
Yeah.
About half acre or three acre, basically, uh, because, uh, so we should continue with the half acre with public water and sewer.
Is this the single family part? This is for single family uses only.
Oh, oh, oh.
So there's a sentence there in the tent, minimum lot size, single family, individual, lot and sewer. And lot sizes. This goes back to that char connected to public. Now, um, there, when you say public, do you mean public, or is that including something like an old house? I'll take a look at it. Okay. That's probably connected to, I think, because the comparison is, we have individual water and sewer, and then, okay. So, so this is the concept of, is there an interest in changing the lot size? For the R three and the RN, or are we comfortable with the existing lots that we have, and we think that we're sort of getting push to the RPUD, because that's sort of what the market demand right now? Um, I'm not wedded to this idea, I'm just throwing out options.
I would, I would love to hear from developers. A lot of people would have to look at this and deal with what they say. Look to see the market price.
And then balance that with neighbors' say.
Well, what, absolutely, but I think the starting point is, these are the people that work with this stuff, so what, cause I, hopefully, they're, I know.
Oh, they want it down to six thousand if they can get it.
Well, I, I, I'm gonna get brave enough, I mean, Ken, Ken says, what, they're gonna look at, say, how can I make the most money? But I think there has to be an element of, what's the market want? Because they can't sell what the market doesn't want by, so, so I think their starting point is, what are they, they work with this stuff, but I, we don't have to say we're gonna do what the developers say, we're gonna, but I think.
Right, I know.
Starting, starting point there, and it's, and then back it into the market, the neighbors want, and I, and that's why I would like to do this, because I would like to have a better way to deal with some of the tough cases that are coming for us now. To mesh this with the comprehensive plan, because you look at some of these cases, and, and they're, they're trying to do something, and they say, look, there's no way I can comply with the comprehensive plan. Because, you know, you wanna connectivity if I do this, and if, or you might, you know, lots, I'm gonna do this. So I, I don't know, I'm wondering if they could tell us where that sweet spot is between R one and RPUD.
I, I mean, I don't think we should be really encouraging, really, yes, however. You know, to me, maybe, because that's, that's why I don't know, cause, um, you know, our service cost, right?
But if that's what the market wants, why should we drive it?
I don't care, I mean, we gotta think about the services and what, you know, our citizens need, too.
They can build the market, I guess, if people, if they don't want them, people will come.
I think we want.
So what we wanna do is encourage development along the lines of our comprehensive plan, there's a lot of potential development happening today, if we just suggest that.
Exactly.
But we don't wanna say, no, everything is.
No, and why?
Say, yes, if the climate is consistent, well, we took the climate effort to develop, and we're gonna have that. But we have some, like, twenty-two, twenty-five hundred, uh, lots, before we came in, uh, fully assigned, you know, fully came in, twenty-five units. So there was, there's a lot there existing already that can be, that can be built, that, that even for that, and the zone can be built on. So apparently, only in a few specific cases, has there been marked man for that creed, zone, uh, pre-zone stuff. We just, and we've added, some stuff been built out pretty much right away, outside of that, when we came in. You have part of the location driven, because the.
Yeah, of course, it's.
A lot of highs, yeah, because I think you have a lot of properties sunk down, in lesser part of the county, or something less of oil. Not ready to build, but nobody's, but, it's.
There's thought to.
It's starting, it's starting. We're in a little, like, let's deal with it.
There's still, not a couple thousand, one hundred thousand that are not even, uh, you know, what's that, Creston Park, um, and. Lanes End, and, uh, Market's Ridge, Market's Ridge was before us, Lanes End was after us. Park Center, so, just as we came on, that's all that we're quick.
Is that what, you know, the size of many lots in there is twenty or fifteen?
They're, Park Center, Saddle Creek, they're about six to eight thousand.
A lot, a lot size? Six thousand square foot? We're talking about golf from twenty to fifty, two small, uh, with water and sewer. Uh, they make it back to, if it was three thousand, probably didn't build anything, and it could have been established, but a lot of public works, so.
So, I think that talks to the, your point about the market, is that more people are looking to, to live in an area like, you know, it's more a lot. You know, it takes me an hour and a half to cut my grats, although I wanna do that next year, maybe not.
You have a lot more time. You might come in your way, man.
I want that free time, I can sit by the pool.
No, I mean, I think that that's their age, those are age targeted also, right? The Park Center mill is age targeted, not age restricted, but age targeted.
I think, I think I've really done a home with above age target.
It's aspirational, that's something you're probably, well.
Excuse me. Yeah. But, a price, and if you put, if we make a little bit bigger lot, and we want to commit to age target.
Well, even on, but I think the point is, is that even on six thousand square feet, they're age targeted.
That's pretty poor, six thousand.
So, so because the price point on those homes is probably, is probably in the sixes, even on six thousand square feet.
So, so Susan, I hear what you're saying about, my, my reaction was, I don't think we should fight the market, and Ken makes a point, when I, when I first got on the board, I know, Joanne and Matt Ryan told me, you know, we can fill West Creek with town, just open up the building, we can fill all town. So, yeah. I don't, I don't encourage that, we don't, we don't, there were, military, and so, we don't wanna do that, for all sorts of reasons. But, when we have a area that we know it's not gonna be commercial, it's gonna be residential, where I'm coming from, is I don't know that we should fight the market over that particular neighborhood. That's, I mean, that's, so, cause your, your point was, I don't think we should be encouraged in dense, density.
Well, I, you know, we gotta look at what it's gonna look like twenty years from now, and we're gonna be nothing but this short. And there's really, really dense housing everywhere, and that's the, the, the.
So, but if, but if the market for housing, once that's our housing, we're gonna have a choice, either not gonna sell, it's gonna stay, or culture, or commercial. So, that's where I'm.
Well, I mean, uh.
I mean, it is, it's a balance, I don't, I don't.
Yeah, so, I can't take some of the type of, 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 could you look up a damn, the last three companies in Peterborough, and how many pre-orders, uh, Park and Saddle Creek, and Park. There is, there are product markets that, that serve in this, where the whole car selling cannot send, for example, you're just selling out the vehicles, you're already not townhouses or apartments. So I think, I think having reasonable growth, in a deliberate way, is consistent with a comp plan, uh, as opposed to just opening it up, and, and, so, the market's, you know, just run over here, I think we can continue to, you know, if, 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 if all the government shuts down and goes to.
No, I don't want to shut it down, you know. You know, it's not, it's not selling, right?
But if, 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 eventually selling in a deliberate fashion, that services can keep, that is, well, that, 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 being overwhelmed. I think that's, that's the, that's about the point. I think that's what citizens want, is, 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 you know, they want managed growth, deliberate growth, in a way that's not the law of services.
Just not near any.
Have you talked, yeah, not, yeah, not, and, and, where, yeah.
Everybody feels.
You named one far away from all of the communities.
I'm on my back here, I'm on the road.
Another option to this is not making any changes to lot sizes now, and with the next comp plan update, we will get very specific changing the low density, medium density, to maybe more of a lot size, and maybe doing a zoning update, that's the same, not an update, but revising some of these zoning districts at that time. Um, it was done, yeah, so it's, it has to be done every five years, but it starts, like, ticking each time you've updated, so we did the MTP twenty eighteen. So technically, we wouldn't need to do it again until twenty twenty-three.
We don't, we don't want to do that.
Um, but, uh, the board can decide to bring it back at any time. When the zoning rewrite's done, one of the other things, then, substitution ordinance rewrite? Yeah. Which means.
Yeah, perhaps, that may have to be at the end, but perhaps we can continue to gather feedback from citizens.
Yeah, and let's see.
Okay.
So, so we don't make decisions today, or do we have to make it all through this process, or let's just continue?
So sort of, keep it in there, but not make any of the changes in the text or anything.
This is a potential.
We can present it, yeah, let's see, go ahead.
Just collect the feedback, if that way, it may, it may solve itself, once we have the developers give.
I mean, I have a public right here.
Oh, right, yeah, they never could have valued your folks, right?
That's a good question.
Yes, we did make a public vote.
What was the big box choose?
So we did not review this with them, when we met with them, it was back in December, it was a, o, open forum, more general, you know, what are, what are the issues, what causes you problems, that sort of thing.
We had another meeting scheduled with them.
Um, they were all sent specific invitations to the meeting, the citizen meeting two weeks ago, and Mount High.
Only one in New York.
Yes.
Are you kind of, you're a citizen?
Tom, I'm still on the same slide as my question.
That's why I kinda looked around, like, that's the same slide.
This is the second, oh, we're back. Okay, big progress, we have passed the hard slide, so, okay. All right, so RN, so the same use changes that we made in, um, the, uh, R one district. Um, we did a provision that there's no open space requirements, if there's six lots or fewer, we made it to all the residential districts except for RN, so that's a cleanup that was missed a few years ago. Um, again, this is a decision point, I think we've come to a consensus on those. Um, so the RPUD district had probably the most changes, um, again, makes sense, because it's the district that's used most often. So we revised the statement of intent, we sort of reorganized the section, um, many of the submental requirements were repetitive, so we deleted those. Um, so the density right now in the RPUD district, you can do a base density of two, and then you go up to two point five with environmental incentive, can't say the word, incentives? However, the environmental incentives, I keep saying that, I think it's not my own words, the environmental incentives are ridiculous. They are things like orientation to sun and wind, and just ridiculous things, so our recommendation is just to delete that, the, 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 the good things in it is require sidewalks and things like that, so we made those requirements and just change the base density to two point five. Um, one thing is, right now, it requires open space of thirty-five percent, I mean, I'm sorry, thirty percent. So typically, most of the, um, open space we get is the perimeter buffer of thirty-five feet that's around it. So our recommendation would be to, uh, reduce the open space to twenty-five percent, but not allow them to include the perimeter buffer, that way you'd be getting more usable open space. Um, we are requiring sidewalks along one side of the street, except for cul-de-sac roads that are less than a hundred fifty feet in length. One thing we did with this, um, one, is we went back through many of the proppers for the RPUD, and picked up things that were regularly proffered and added it to the ordinance, that's one thing. Um, they have an FAR requirement for residential, that's a core area ratio, that doesn't make any sense, that only comes into play for commercial, uh, districts, so we did delete that. Um, there was a section in there that the density shall not exceed six units on one acre.
Changes to the B two district would be the name change to neighborhood's business. We would move it prior to the B one districts and then our commercial districts would be in order of intensity. We cleaned up the statement of intent. We added a statement that this would serve as a transitional use between residential and more intense commercial development. Again, tied the statement of intent to the comp plan and just did general cleanup in that district. Um, the B one district, uh, we've updated the statement of intent and then we divided the uses into following categories. So there are a lot of uses in this district, so it became a lengthy list, so we tried to break them up into categories. General, commercial and office, food, beverage uses, recreation, entertainment, public institutional uses, light industrial uses and utilities. Uh, this was another one that we spent a lot of time benchmarking other localities, you know, in the surrounding areas as well as other, um, rural localities. Or what type of commercial uses do other, uh, localities add that we don't have that may be appropriate in Huxland? So we have these following that were recommended to be added as by right uses. Uh, auction house, bike sales, gas station, personal services, packing and mailing services, shopping centers. Again, we have shopping centers, it's just not defined, not as permitted use in our code. Studios and shops for artists, teachers and other craftsmen on the floor area not exceeding three thousand square feet. Um, and these would be continued to be by right. Group hub, catering, meal delivery, micro brewery, micro distillery, college or university, park and ride lots and government services. So anybody have any concerns with those as by right?
College and university. This is B one.
Yeah, so our thought was like in Hemarico, they have a stronger university, it's an office building.
Right. And this is B one, this is not the quick stuff, so.
Okay. All right, so we're recommending these be added to the B one district as CUP uses. Auto rental, car wash, either primary or accessory use, indoor recreation facilities and broadcasting studio. Okay? Um, the B one uses that are gonna have use standards, uh, adult businesses, that's already in the code, it's got some standards. Um, so that would be added as development standards. Child care center, drive-through businesses, which is already in the code. Uh, mobile home or travel chair as temporary use during construction, that's already in the code. And restaurants, including drive-throughs, that's already in the code. Again, we're just putting it in the, in the section so that people know to refer to.
Would we be adding adult care center?
Uh, that's already in.
It's already.
It's already.
Is there, um, by right with conditions?
Yes, with development standards.
It's not the standard.
Um, there's two in here that have landscape requirements. Um, that's something that if in our landscape section, we're gonna address these uses and they are gonna be continued to be allowed. But we're gonna reference it to the landscape section. Right now, it references you to the, uh, vehicles, the, uh, inoperable vehicle section of our code. So the decision points on this one, a little bit easier. Uh, are you comfortable deleting the POP district that nobody uses? And you can do offices in our other districts. Um, want, from the developer roundtable, they did ask us to remove the FAR requirement. Um, so floor area ratio deals with how much building, including stories, is on, uh, on the lot. The only time we have had to tell someone they couldn't build as large as they wanted to was when it was a mini storage. Because they have very small parking requirements, so they could max out the site. Um, it, it served us well then keeping the FAR. So it's up to the board whether they wanna move it or move it or not. Um, I think it has worked well. It also sort of, if we want to not be, you know, the Hemarico that has eight-story buildings and things like that, floor area ratio helped us get there, so.
And this, this would apply to all buildings in B one?
Yes.
There's very distinction, I mean, between uses of any kind.
Yeah.
It's a floor ratio.
Yeah.
It's helped us.
Um, the other comment during the developer roundtable was that somebody asked if they CCRC could be added back to the B one. When we went through that, um, aged housing study, we specifically said we did not want that in there. That it's, it's, it's a more of a residential use and we added it to the RPUD district. Um, we have very limited B one areas. Do we want sort of this residential use in a B one? So my recommendation would be to go with what we did when we did a complete analysis of it, so. Are you comfortable with that?
That's like continuous care, stuff like.
Okay. Awesome. All right, any other questions on business before we move to the industrial districts?
Just a quick one, things like, uh, so this probably falls under like home occupation kind of thing, but Uber, Lyft, those kinds of, um, businesses, if you will.
Mm-hmm.
Are those covered anywhere, where about, uh, the move to, uh, car sharing kinds of things where they're more urban kind of things? But they're starting to show up.
Yeah, so they're not uses, they're using the roads, but they're not.
Yeah, but they're kind of, whoever's got it is kind of doing a business.
Are you thinking like, uh, a parking area where there's, uh, maybe electric car bookups and there's, you know, you're not thinking that of?
Yeah, because we did add electric vehicle charging stations, that's under utilities.
So if I buy a car, if I buy a car and I wanna leave, and somebody's coming into town, flying into town, I can put my car up to rent it out for a couple days. With some of my work to empty a home office.
Yeah.
To a home business. Yeah, no employees.
Yeah, no employees.
You got customers coming?
Now you go to the customer, you go, yeah, you bring his car to your house.
But now if you're renting your car, well, if you could take it to, yeah, you could be ready to leave. If you take Uber, Uber to your house, take your own.
All right, industrial districts. Uh, so those are the lavender, uh, in the West Creek area and then up in the northwest, northeastern portion of the county, Ashland Road. The darker purple is the M two areas. Um, you can see the M two down on Patterson Avenue, that's the Love Quarry. Uh, and then we have, you know, some of our industrial parks, that's, uh, oil well, some down here. So the purples are the industrial districts. Um, again, lots of benchmarking, looking at localities, want to add as many uses, you know, definitely uses that our neighboring jurisdictions add. So the list of new permitted uses in M one and M two would be animal grooming, animal shelter, art studio, auction facility, automobile rental, automobile storage lots, catering, commercial kitchens, electric vehicle charging stations, gas stations, uh, government, these are new, new uses. Government maintenance or storage facility, dance, martial arts, printing or similar reproduction facilities, retail sales and taxi or limousine service. That's sort of maneuver. Um, the permitted uses in the industrial districts with development standards, uh, these are new ones. Um, automobile rental, automobile storage lots, breweries, ciderade, distillery, wineries and sale of trucks, trailers, equipment and tools. And I think mainly deals with screening and things like that. Um, one change we are recommending is, um, health clubs and gymnasiums, that's types of uses go from a CUP use to a permitted use. We had several CUPs come through, um, in the last few months. We had the, uh, not few months, but probably the last two years. We had the martial arts studio over behind Food Lion. We had the pole vaulting place over in West Creek. Um, nobody had any issues with them. We had very low conditions, so we're recommending those be by right uses.
I'm sorry, do I need to slide toward this line as well, the new uses that we're suggesting would all be permitted in West Creek?
Yes.
Right now they're CUP.
CUP. Uh, well, the first slide, those, those would all be permitted in West Creek because I said M one.
Because I know we're not.
Now, they have their own restrictive covenants that would not allow certain uses, many of these uses.
Right. I know when we created this, but there was, and then of course we added a little bit of residential there that was a bit, like they had a lot of parties and everything. So those were concerns that we had fifty-four years ago. I don't know if all of these were initially set up or if this is a somewhat of a change.
Yes, their proffered have limitation on uses. So the West Creek has specific use proffered.
Proffered?
Yes. So.
That restricts some of the use?
Well, they weren't on the book then, so they wouldn't have proffered them as being permitted.
Okay, so maybe this will not expand or could go West Creek?
On that, unless they change the problems.
Right, that was my question. I'm gonna still have to go in for a resounding, somebody from West Creek? Or could an applicant come in and discuss, uh, resounding to talk to book? It'd have to be West Creek? Probably fine, probably fine.
Again, nobody can come in on behalf of those three thousand acres anymore. Because if the property owner has got to be reporting, they're requesting a change.
Oh.
So, uh, an individual property owner or contract purchaser could come in and say, I'd like to change the West Creek proffer for this site to do an animal shelter. And you can say yes or no, but, um, people who own have an interest in the property. So who would come in with a dozen undeveloped sites that they still have in their companies and ask for a change? But I do not want to also change the West Creek proffer because you now have.
Multiple owners.
Okay. Any questions on the industrial districts? Okay, so the use standards, so we sort of hit them as we went through. Um, again, I told you, we, they're referenced in the, in the chart and it says the use in accordance with section. It takes you to the section. We have it broken down into categories. So we have the agricultural standards and we have those uses that fall under the agricultural. We have animals and associated structures, um, that talks about how many animals you can have on your lot and things like that. Uh, we have a section on the commercial and industrial standards. We have residential standards, motor vehicles, construction trailers, communication towers, antennas, those types of uses. Renewable energy sources and then places of public assembly is its own category. Um, so for an example, I brought one, I'm not gonna go through all of them, um, but I brought, did give an example. So for the child care center, we say, um, the facility shall comply with all applicable state regulations regarding licensing and operating. The outdoor play areas need to be safely segregated from parking, loading service areas. Uh, outdoor play areas would need to be, uh, closed by a fence of at least three and a half feet in height. Um, you have to have vehicle access designated, pick-up areas, drop-off areas. And then number four, if you can't meet these above standards, you can come in and ask for a CUP. So not all of them are set up that way, but many of them are set up that way, um, that if you can't meet the standards, you can come in and ask for a CUP. Um, I'm not gonna go through all of these standards. I would ask that you look at them, especially some of the changes to like the home occupation and all, and please give me any feedback you have, um, on those. So sort of just to wrap up our timeline, um, so this completed more, a good probably forty, forty-five percent of the zoning rewrite is this section. Um, so that's complete. We've now had our citizen meeting, we've got the board feedback. Again, like I said, these are still in draft forms, we are constantly updating and checking and, um, you'll continue to see changes all the way throughout the process. Um, the next section probably be a little more exciting, a little more hands-on kind of stuff that you can really more wrap your head around. I think we probably have more developer interest in this section. Um, we're gonna cover all the development standards, parking, plan of development, rural plan of development, lighting, signs and landscaping. So the citizen meeting would be June thirteenth, the board work session, um, again, six, on the six twenty-five, again, at three, three o'clock here.
Six twenty-six.
Yeah.
You're right, thank you.
No worries.
Sorry. And then the last section, um, we'll do the overlay districts, measurements, definitions, the graphics sections, the pre-application process, all of those things. Those are our July meetings. So by the end of July, we'll have everything sort of in a draft form, had had some sort of public review, some sort of board review. So August, we would be asking the board, um, hopefully to refer the zoning ordinance to the planning commission. Um, during the month of August, we'll be finalizing all of those changes and, and feedback and changing it from a draft to a more final form. Um, we'll be continuing to do engagement at that time. We'll probably do another countywide meeting for the whole thing, um, reach out to the Chamber of Commerce, Deep Run Hunt community, other interested groups, the development community. So August will be a busy time, we'll be having a lot of, uh, meetings to get this out, sort of like when we did the, um, comp plan rollout. Goal is to have this tentatively for a public hearing before the planning commission in September. Um, October first, public hearing for the board of supervisors and then an adoption effect of January one, twenty twenty. So that is the, the goal. So it'll be a busy summer, um, but I think we're in a really good place. I think we, the next section will be a little more interesting. I think we've got some really good concepts to bring to you that, that will help clarify things. I think the development community will be pleased and I think the citizens will also be pleased, so. Sure.
I mean, we started out this thing earlier this year, last year, knowing that this hasn't been looked at in fifty years, right? So I mean, this is, we are on fast track and I get it, I don't have to slow that down, but I'm willing to fall on my sleeves and do the work, right? The fact that it hasn't been looked at in fifty years.
Last year.
Yeah, at this depth. And, you know, I figured this might be second in history of the guys, made up fifty years. So I, I really, uh, I just, I mean, I really wanna catch something, really dig in. So two thoughts, I'm gonna go forward a little bit. Can you give me a preview of the overlay districts? I mean, that would be better if I could a little bit more about what they are now, but I mean, for you going to be looking at overlay districts in terms of maybe the Hanson, uh, giving us, uh, where are you heading with overlay districts? Is it a refresh or is it a deep dive in like, can overlay districts be used in a way unirreptic in the moment?
So we're, we're going back to that mantra of clarify, modernize, simplify. And that's what we, as we go through that. So there's many things that aren't very clear. We have a lot of vague statements in the overlay district, we'd be trying to clear up some of that, um, simplify the process a little bit. Um, we want us not make everything have to go to the design review committee. Some things, one is characteristic approach, if they need all the requirements, it's something that can be reviewed administratively and not have to make them go to the design review committee. Um, so those are some of the changes that we're thinking about.
Sure.
But in terms of going out and doing, you know, pictures of roof structures and style of buildings, we would not be going to that depth at this time.
Okay, yeah, I know there's nothing to talk about. So maybe I'll, may catch you and talk a little bit more about overlay districts and just, but maybe I should read where we have, just what we have now too. But of course, my driver is, and I've heard from some people in Canada after our decision on Reed Marsh, where it's over percent. My campus has a sort of a village plan, my campus is a, it's not a.
And I think, I think the process would be is if you did a, a village plan, some of the recommendations with that plan would be specific changes to make to the overlay districts. Like you have to have the plan first and then make the changes.
That makes sense. So, you know, I'm looking at, I've looked, I've looked at other, at several tabs over in different counties. Um, I, I need to always go back to Hanover and there's a lot of things in here that just don't apply to us, we wouldn't do. But back to the residential, uh, they have four residential districts and, and let me back up. Why I'm touching on this is from our earlier discussion before the break, I'm getting a little anxious about the disconnection between the comprehensive plan and the zoning. And I can't articulate it any better than that, but I, I just, I'm thinking about that in terms of all these zoning options versus what the comprehensive plan says. And I'm gonna make sure those, that we're able to pull them apart and reconnect them when we revisit the comprehensive plan. But anyway, a bunch of thoughts in my head, but I looked at Hanover and this made me think about the R one, R three discussion. They have four districts, rural conservation district, RC, that's for residential in, in, in the rural areas. It's much like, uh, I think probably what. Then they have, next one, next intense is RS, single family. Next one is RM, multi-family. Next one is, yeah, that just makes use. So really, when you break it down, rural conservation, outside of any water and sewer area, single family, residential, which in Hanover is a little more, looks up a little more intense.
Yeah, remember on a two by two, we brought the RS district from Hanover to the board because theirs is just a, a flat. You can do one unit per acre and then if you do street trees, you get another presented, if you sidewalk, you do another presented. And I think the, the, that was the one that is support from that.
Let's simply, but again, I'm not saying that we need to follow it. I'm thinking just for a starting point criteria from what we label, rural conservation, I, I like that ring, I think it highlights the rural aspect of it.
I think it's, it's, I think ours would be rural preservation, RP district.
RP, rural conservation, let's, let's make sure we, is that the way we? Do we, do we call it?
RP district, yeah.
Do we, do we say rural preservation? I'm not, I'm not.
Yeah, we set the name, but.
I'm almost making sure that the label and the market part is there. So, but I like this, at least just starting is maybe a thought about, say, with single family, then multi-family. And maybe in our comprehensive plan, we look at, uh, this is an area targeted for residential. And we maybe won't get boxed into a situation like, well, there was no water and sewer here when we did this plan, but now there is. So, so then we do rezoning that's appropriate to the facilities that are available at the time the application is.
And I think that's sort of how we summed it up is that when we did the next comp plan, we, we look at that in a holistic way and it may require us to come back and tweak densities, lot sizes and things like that. But we need to look at it holistically.
Simply say residential, this is the area of the community, this is residential. I, I get, but I, I just like the idea of, you look like rural conservation, single RS, single family, R, multi-family, mixed uses. And there's things in the mix that we don't.
Well, we had like the on-5, that's, that's the risk.
So I, I'll, I'll, I'll review this and pull some thoughts together and share them, you know, after.
Okay, great.
But I guess, you know, you talk about simplify, I kind of like the idea of single conservation areas outside of public utilities, single family, multi-family. And then obviously, you know, mixed uses and what's. Yeah, but I guess that's our.
Yes, I'm happy to take feedback from everybody. Um, a lot to process, I know this is very dry, thank you for tolerating me, um, this afternoon and giving up your comp, we really appreciate it.
Yeah, great, thank you for all this, this is a heavy lift, uh, once in fifty years and it has.
Yeah, I'm not doing this again in fifty years.
You're just saying.
I haven't been here in, you know, I lose my expertise on this in fifty years now. And, you know, as dry as it may be to go through it, I'm thinking all the work that goes into this to get the overlay office, I'm thanking for that. Um, I have one question, um, and it may be as much a legal to it as planning. Um, everything in the past, we are, we're hoping on future, is the difference on the categories, the different things in my brain, the different things, development standards, different things, the cops. But it's all you can't do this, it was only, you can't, what about the captain? And it's why I believe, because I know you can outlaw church, it is a good constitution protection from the information, but, but, you know, certainly there are some things out there that you just play, you rather not. I think you're a parent, uh, a lot of dumps, you know, garbage dumps, but maybe some things concealed, and maybe some things that we say, this is bad interest.
Yeah, what about?
So my question is, if, if it's not permitted and it's prohibited, but, so if you don't say you can do it, so you can't do it concealed, it's called a hotel with an F and R and a P and I.
So if you.
We've had a lot of people try to speak him.
So if you look under general provisions, under general rules, um, number one says this ordinance form, which this chapter has derived, is intended to be an inclusive ordinance. Only those usage structures or features specifically permitted in specific district regulations don't be allowed. So if it's not in that district, then it's not permitted use.
Yeah, I guess in the past, we've had some homes committed to some law, I don't like this, or no, you're kind of not, but, you know, when you're close enough, it's, there's a hotel.
We have made interpretations in the past and that's why we've put so much effort trying to add some of the uses, so that there's less interpretation.
I think when we approved the solar farm, that wasn't in the code, right?
Well, it's a, we had public utility that.
So we, we listed it as public utility, now we have it spelled out. It just, it seems like if you look at all the scanning candidates, which we've raised, I wonder why it's a while, there's something to pay for or something probably gets happened to the citizens. Because they're out of each part sometimes, you know, you kind of get some, you know, a kind of a high profile type of thing. And again, I don't know if I'd like to, I don't know if it makes any sense, or if it's, you know, double cap, and say, well, it's not permitted, and, and, and we get a, a little. Or if you wanna say, say, no, say, you shouldn't try to come in with this, and follow it something else. Yeah, I don't know if you're saying that, again, it's a question of whether or not, but our ability to permit it, our desire to permit it, or other things, we say, no, we'll, we'll take anything that's out there and we're gonna make.
No, I mean, our safest legal stance is to have an inclusive ordinance as well, to do it the same. And that way, we, we don't run the risk of liability from a statement that you may not do this. Frank, if adult uses are listed here as permitted use, but under, you know, but my guess is that once you tick down all the sorts of things, it just can still happen, but maybe that's not gonna happen pretty soon. But it's not permitted. But you see what I mean? Your safest legal option is exactly what we have, which is we are telling you, you can do all these things. And like the other localities that do inclusive ordinances, it's fairly common. If there's a use that comes through tomorrow that is a new use, but it's fairly consistent with something we have, Joanna is entitled to make that combination like, hmm, we don't list this, but it's so similar to X, I'm not allowed. And that, that's again, well within the permissiveness of interpretation of zoning ordinance. On the other hand, if it's either a new use that we wouldn't want to allow or a new use that, um, isn't listed, you know, that's why the, the Airbnb wasn't really allowed under our old ordinance, wasn't intended to be. And so we brought you something, so you know, there's something new going on in our world, it's called Airbnb. Wanna adopt it and how do you wanna allow it? And we did. So that's how you keep up with the more current uses that are different from what we have. The ones that come in that are just mildly different from what you have and the interpretations, right? And meanwhile, without saying, uh, a prohibition, which can be a legally challenging, you not want anything that's not listed.
Okay, I, I can't come up on the cross in this, but I'm just wondering if you're based on this or not. Uh, but for instance, uh, you know, a tattoo parlor, and it was a retail, or, uh, payday loan, cash, you guys have financial support. You know, I, I, I just don't know, I, again, I can't come up at all. And, and if there's people I know who's probably supported, then I'm not suggesting, but if there are things that we think that are not the key, given whatever the comp plan is, or a desire for the county to go forward. I don't know, I, I, again, if we went through, these are all admitted, and what about things we really don't want, maybe we, we don't, like you said, it's hard to put it in spirit. But, but they could come in, this is a retail, this is a financial, this is something else, a public utility, you know, we can clarify, it's a public utility. Maybe sometimes you can't say anything like SLR, you're some family, you're some, you can't, in, in the new institutions. But maybe there are some things that are not out of bounds, that where you're inconsistent with the comp plan, you know, might just say, like, right, uh, but anyway, I'm not, I'm asking a question, I haven't given the answer, it's more legal, maybe perhaps than the planner. We spend a lot of time on, can we do these things, can we spend any time on, can we do these things? We spend a lot of time on, can't do these things, I just, we spend any time on, can't do these things, it's a problem.
Yeah, we thought of it that way.
Two questions.
Okay.
And I don't need an answer right this minute, but on the use standards, now go back through them on page 12, 15, 287. Actually, on page 15, 287, I, A, for amateur radio, for receive only antennas, this receiving and transmit for amateur radio. So just take a look at that.
Okay, who were you again?
Okay, on page 13, item, uh, item four, some amateur radio and receive only antennas.
Oh, okay.
Did you tell me I can't transmit my antenna?
All right, I don't, I don't have to pull that.
For amateur radio. And the second thing was, you had hopped up a couple dates there, some citizen meetings and board meetings. And I have this on my calendar, just wanted to do that for quick.
Okay.
Okay. All right, thanks.
I, the SEC regulates antennas, right?
Why, well, I could put an antenna provide for the radio.
I mean, I, I think the SEC forbids some locality from banning satellite dishes. So it might be the same with antennas, that if you listen to transmission.
And actually, what that statement is talking about is that the regulations don't go. That that's listed under four, so that's regular.
They shouldn't govern transmission either. I don't think they're allowed to govern transmission.
So when you say, well, we regulate, and that statement is about us not regulating. And it's less, let's have insurance.
I'm assuming that's all but cheap with that, you know, the power. Okay, sorry, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you so much, good mom, we appreciate it.
All right, thank you, Joanne.
Good job.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So our next meeting is tomorrow at 6:00 PM. It's a listening session for, on a voice ordinance. But I will adjourn to our next official meeting, which will be June the 4th at 3:00 PM.